Good evening. Welcome to the July 23 meeting of the Murfreesboro City School Board. We're glad to have those of you in the audience with us tonight. We're also glad to have those that are watching on TV at home. At this time, I'm going to ask you to please stand as Sherri Arnett, our Assistant Superintendent of Instruction, will lead us in our pledge, followed then by our moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now our moment of silence. Thank you. All right, members of the board, you have seen any copy of the agenda? Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as printed?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Long. Any question or comment? I see none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposition? There is none. Thank you. Communications, Ms. Trail.
Good evening.
Good evening.
First of all, I hope you all saw our Northfield Elementary on the Kelly Clarkson Show. I think Ms. Mifflton is here. We are so excited. If you didn't, all you have to do is go and search the Kelly Clarkson Show, Northfield Elementary, and you'll see our school represented nationally about reading and the joy of reading with a dog. So, that said, I want to start by thanking Dana Womack with State Farm and United Way of Rutherford and Cannon County for financially supporting our McKinney Vento program as we kick off the new school year. Also, a big thank you to the Nissan Foundation for sponsoring robotics across our district this year. This is the second time they have helped us with robotics, but this year they are our official sponsor of robotics, and we are so grateful for Nissan and the City Schools Foundation for making this happen. Our open houses for our schools are scheduled for August the 5th. They are at varying times, but all of those times are on the school websites. The school calendar is also on the website with the full dates and details of the entire school year. And in case you're wondering, the first half-day for first through sixth grade is August 7th. Our kindergarteners will follow as well as our pre-K. We are having several back-to-school supply drives going on throughout the city and the county this year, and we want to take time to thank all of our faith-based organizations, our businesses, the individuals, who are just helping our students begin the school year with new pencils and pens and backpacks and all of the things that they need to just have a great school year. The supply lists for all grade levels are also on the school website, so if people are going to shop this weekend, those supply lists are already available for them. We will be doing Stuff the Bus next week as well. Congratulations to our nutrition team for another successful MCS summer food program hosted not only at our schools but through the child program. It's always wonderful to see that child bus rolling through our apartment complexes and other areas in our community. The program will run through August 2nd. And that is my communications, sir.
Thank you, ma'am, very much. Wonderful. Our introductions, Dr. Duke, is that you?
Yes, that is me. We have, excuse me, good afternoon or good evening, board. We have several introductions due tonight of some, as we look at our MCS leadership for this year. So I'm going to ask them to come in in a couple rounds. And first, I'm going to ask Ms. Melissa Mifflton to join us at the podium. It is with great pleasure and enthusiasm that I formally introduce Ms. Melissa Mifflton as our new principal of Northfield Elementary School. Ms. Mifflton brings a wealth of talent and expert experience to our schools and will seamlessly blend the school's rich tradition with a forward-looking vision. Ms. Mifflton has served as the Assistant Principal of Northfield since 2020. Previously, she has also served as the Assistant Principal of Eagleville School, Campus School, and McFadden School before joining Murfreesboro City. Through the interview process, Ms. Mifflton emerged as the standout candidate for principal. Her leadership qualities and dedication make her the ideal candidate to guide the achievements of Northfield. I do want to express my gratitude to the entire Northfield staff and those members who served on the lead, on the interview panel and participated in the process. Their input was very valuable, and their insights were instrumental in making this decision. So Ms. Mifflton is not new to Northfield or Murfreesboro. She's a native here of Murfreesboro and attended Murfreesboro City Schools from kindergarten through sixth grade at both Bradley and Mitchell Nielsen, as most people have attended at some point in their life, I've discovered. But we are so pleased that Ms. Mifflton, I don't know if you have a quick word you want to say, but wanted to formally introduce you to the board.
Well, you said just about everything I was going to say, but I'm very excited to lead in a district that I grew up in, and I'm very thankful for Dr. Duke and for the board for all of the support that you've given over the years. We're very excited to continue the foundation that we've laid, creating a culture of kindness and growth and achievement for our students. I'm very excited to lead with our new Assistant Principal, Ms. Ashley Whitaker. We have a very strong administrative team and our leadership team. We just took a trip together and did some planning for the year, so we're very excited to welcome our students back in the next couple of weeks and making sure that they are known, safe, empowered, and challenged at Northfield. That is, that is what we want for them, and we're very excited. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, congratulations.
She's going to do great things. The next group I'm going to ask to come out is Ms. Ashley Whitaker, Dr. Alexandra Juno, and Mr. Chris Penrose, if they'll join us at the podium. And I will save them for time to having to speak, but I do want you to know them, so I'm going to ask them to join us here at the front. These are three new Assistant Principals who will be leading in our district as well. I'll start with Ms. Ashley Whitaker. She's in the middle. Of course, upon the promotion of Ms. Mifflton to principal, we have hired Ms. Ashley Whitaker to be her new Assistant Principal. Ashley has been the instruction, has been an instructional coach and interventionist in MCS for the last three years, and has been at Northfield for the last two of those years. Ms. Whitaker also served as Northfield Summer School Principal and led our summer school program there. She has a strong understanding of the needs of Northfield, and she will be a great complement to Ms. Mifflton. So thank you, Ashley. We're glad to welcome, have you at Northfield. Next to her is Dr. Alexandra Juno, who will be the new Assistant Principal at Mitchell Nielsen Elementary. Dr. Juno actually taught in Murfreesboro City Schools for six years at John Pitterd before accepting a position as school administrator in Wilson County. We are thrilled to welcome her back to MCS and to our, to our district's leadership team. She's already been a great addition and so excited about what she's bringing, and just again, glad to welcome you home to Murfreesboro City. And finally, Mr. Christopher Penrose will be our new Assistant Principal at Reeves Rogers Elementary. Mr. Penrose has worked in MCS for the past six years, where he taught under Ms. Strevel at Black Fox, under Mr. Barche, and Ms. Ortiz at Overall Creek. So he has had some excellent models of school leadership the last six years here. He has also experience in Rutherford County Schools and with Shelby County. He will bring his strong ability to build relationships to help guide Reeves as the start, as they start the 24-25 school year. We are so thrilled, again, great additions to our district leadership team. Assistant Principals are incredibly invaluable to us in the task of school leadership. So thank you, guys, and welcome to the team.
Thank you.
Congratulations, guys.
The last two introductions I have are actually additions to our district central office staff, so I'm going to ask Dr. Sarah Chumney and Ms. Jennifer Lowe to come up to the podium, so you can see faces with names here. I'll start with Dr. Sarah Chumney. Dr. Chumney has been hired as our new English as a Second Language Specialist. For those who know, Ms. Mosley, who was in that position, actually relocated her family, and so we are so thrilled to have Dr. Chumney joining us in this position. We know that our population of English language learners continues to grow in MCS, and it's critical that we are providing the greatest level of supports to our teachers and to our multilingual students. And we know that Dr. Chumney is the person to lead this work. She has been with MCS since 2011. She has an exceptionally strong record in our district and already has the trust of our growing ESL department that's growing. And as someone who has had the privilege of also being her principal in the past, I can tell you, there is no one that will outwork Dr. Sarah Chumney, so we are thrilled to have Dr. Chumney in this role. We also have Ms. Jennifer Lowe, who is our new community engagement facilitator. She will be working in Ms. Trail's department to oversee and coordinate all of our amazing community sponsors. This includes not just the connections we have with things like United Way and our Stuff the Bus program, but growing those programs and being the key person who oversees our weekend food backpack program. What you may not know is that last year, we actually handed out over 16,000 weekend food backpacks, so this is no small task. Ms. Lowe has been with our district since 2021, where she served as an EA previously at Overall Creek. She's been with us for a few weeks, and she has just been a joy to have in the office. And again, I think when I think about what I've seen in Ms. Lowe already, it's incredibly hard work and dedication to the task. We are definitely going to be a better district with both of these two in leadership, so welcome to our central office. I want to introduce you to the board.
Congratulations.
I don't know how you do it, boy, but you sure find some quality folks.
Amen.
Best of MCS.
Glad to come down here as we talk about fantastic folks. We are excited tonight to recognize our July Best of MCS honoree and publicly thank this employee for the hard work and commitment she's made to MCS. And I'm going to tell you, it took a little arm twisting to get her here to do this tonight, but there is truly no one more deserving. I'm pleased to welcome Ms. Beth Prater to the podium with me. She loves this, too. She was nominated and reluctantly-
No, no, we got to get the camera on that.
Camera over there.
Oh, no, no.
Reluctantly, after several invitations agreed to come tonight. As you all know, Ms. Beth, and then Ms. Prater is our finance manager and serves our finance department in our district faithfully. She plays a critical role in the creation of our budget, in the daily running of our finance department, and in ensuring we stay in compliance as we spend our citizens' tax dollars. What you may not know, this is also, that this December, Beth will be celebrating 30 years of service to MCS.
Wow.
Anyone who's had the privilege of working closely with Beth knows what an asset she is to our district. I always joke with her. One of the reasons I love budget time so much is because we get to spend so much time together working closely. Beth was nominated by one of our coworkers in the finance department who stated that, who stated this: Beth has a unique power that originates from a quiet consistency. She is clearly dedicated to our district, as shown by her years of service, her long hours stepping in and doing whatever it takes to get the job done and helping wherever she is needed. In finance at MCS, every dollar matters, but Beth finds every cent. She cares about the finances of Murfreesboro City Schools more than anyone I have met. She is honest, caring, kind, and full of grace. I received several comments about Beth that continue to echo many of these same sentiments that speak not only to her excellence as an employee, but her character. I was told that Beth genuinely cares about her team and wants to make sure they are taken care of, both inside the office and outside of the office. Another told me that her humble and quiet personality encases her honesty, her loyalty, and her dedication to MCS. Finally, another said that she is patient and one of the hardest workers she ever known, has ever known. And as you can tell from these comments and the fact that the entire department came to support, right, Beth's work speaks for herself. Personally, I can also attest to all the wonderful comments being made. Beth epitomizes the type of characteristics that we want in every leader in this district, and we are so grateful for her dedication. So Beth, on behalf of our district, let me thank you for the work you've done. Your work does not go unnoticed, and I can confidently say that we are a better district with you here. Thank you for representing the best of MCS.
Now that they've thoroughly embarrassed you.
Don't worry, she'll get them back.
That was excellent. That was great.
Beth, I hate to say it, but I'm afraid that they're going to learn what paybacks really are.
That's right.
That's coming.
Spotlight on education.
Yes, I'm pleased to ask Ms. Arnett to come and provide our spotlight on education tonight. As we are beginning to start the school year, obviously, we are wrapping up a very busy summer, and that's going to be part of the focus of our spotlight tonight.
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
Such a great board meeting. I just love it. I want to take you back a couple of months to Memorial Day week, when that week began, and I'm going to share with you how the instruction team just jumped right in and started our professional development for the summer. So if I can get this going. In May of that week, of Memorial Day week, we spent, Kathy Doherty spent a week hosting our first K-2 Literacy Institute, where we had 21 teachers participate. During this four-day, four days of learning, participants gained clarity around the evolution of reading instruction while also taking a deep dive into our EL curriculum. These teachers received a daily stipend, and they also received instructional materials to help them with the literacy block. And so I just want to take a moment to thank Kathy Doherty for her hard work during this week. I'm always so excited when I get the feedback from teachers, so I wanted to take a minute and just share the quotes that some teachers said when they left this training. I am just amazed at how much I've learned this week and can't wait to take it back to school. Please share this info with as many teachers as you can. It's impactful. And every single teacher K-2, I'm sorry, every single K-2 teacher should go through this training. So just a great week of K-2 learning there with literacy. We move to the month of June, and we switch gears a little bit and go into all things math. So during this month of June, while summer school's going on, teachers are teaching summer school. We're still providing PD for the teachers that aren't. Dr. Oliver, in partnership with MTSU and Dr. Winters, we offered five two-hour PD sessions covering topics from how to use math manipulatives to number talks, and we had a total of 85 teachers join these five sessions. Dr. Oliver also did a book study that took to all four Tuesdays of the month of June, so that was also an added bonus, and those were by Zoom. So I want to just take a moment to thank Dr. Oliver for her work and Dr. Winters for working with these. Here are the quotes that we heard from teachers from this training. It was great. I feel empowered. I am looking forward to implementing this in my classroom. I enjoyed this session and definitely feel prepared for the next school year. And then we come to July. During the month of July, Dr. Kathy Pressnell presenting not one week, but two weeks of literacy training for our 3-6 teachers with a total of 50 participants. During this, these two weeks, two different cohorts, teachers worked to understand the reasons and research behind the use of HQIM with a high degree of integrity and also explored instructional moves to deepen their understanding of the material. Teachers also received a stipend and were given literacy materials as well, and I just want to thank Dr. Pressnell for this work. These quotes are just simply amazing, and this is just a few of them. My thinking has changed in the following ways: confident, intentional, and trust the makeup of the curriculum. Every teacher should go to this. It was extremely helpful, and I'm so excited to teach this school year. My thinking has changed in the following ways. Same quote as I put the first one. You know, let's just say it again, right? Confident, intentional, and trust the makeup of the curriculum. Okay, it's a good one. It's a good one. We need to hear it twice, right? If it's worth saying once, it's worth saying twice. And then that moves us to August. We are very excited. Coming August 1st, 8:00 to 3:00 on the campus of Middle Tennessee State University, we will hold our district-wide PD for all teachers. Dr. Duke and guests will kick us off for the welcome. And then if you'll notice, there's that little QR code that I want to say a special thanks to, to Trent and Mickey and Leah Barche for putting this all together. Teachers will be able to scan this document. It's live. It shows the sessions. It shows them a map of where the sessions are going to be held. I see Mr. Richardson's got it pulled up. It is quite impressive, so I encourage you to take a look at it, but we are very excited about August 1st, and we're very proud of all the trainings that we have done this summer. Dr. Duke did share this morning with new teachers that, you know, the importance of PD. And so I can honestly say that we believe this summer, we are and we have enhanced academic achievement by providing high-quality professional development worthy of a teacher's time. And I could not have done that if it weren't for the people that I work with. So I just want to say thank you to all of them and all the teachers that took the time to come during these professional development sessions.
And Sherri, if I can add to the board, just to, you know, I think it's so important. Her team does such good work, and I think when we think about professional development from years past, it may be a two-hour training on this or a one-hour training on this. The trainings that Ms. Arnett's talking about are intensive, week-long, 8:00 to 3:00 every day, really diving deep, really tied to the materials they're using. So when she talks about this professional development, it is not just, hey, they're coming for a two-hour session and going home. These teachers are committing a week of their summer to this learning in ELA and math, and for them to come out with such strong comments about how beneficial it was, and to say, it wasn't just worthy of two hours of my time, it was worthy of a week of my time. And every day of the training, I think I got one or two emails from teachers just thanking us for this opportunity. So again, huge shout-out to Sherri and her team for the great learning that's happened this year.
Gosh, that's incredible.
You buried the lead for the August 1st. I'm looking at all the different PD opportunities. These topics are extraordinary, in-depth, and touch and concern everything that our students and teachers are going through. This is incredible.
Well, we're very excited, and again, we feel like it will, in the end, benefit our teachers and then the core, our students. So just a great team, and I'm just very thankful for all of them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, public comment, and we have no one to make a public comment tonight. So consent items. Board, you have seen the consent items. We have a motion to approve them as printed.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Long. Any question or comment on the consent items? I see none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Action items, approval of the 24-25 student fees.
Yes, sir. Board Policy 6.709 states that prior to the start of each school year, the board, upon the recommendation of principals and the director of school, shall approve all known student fees for the upcoming school year. Additional fees may be approved during the year as needed. We are recommending to the board that they approve the following fees for the 24-25 school year. The outline is in your packet, but a summary of that includes any field trip up to $20 per student, student recorder fees up to $10 per student, and student T-shirt fees up to $15 per student. This preapproval will decrease turnaround time and allow schools to begin to collect funds immediately after central office approval, and we are recommending approval as presented.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Any questions?
I have a question.
Okay, Mr. Ballard.
The fees that sometimes classrooms charge at the start of the school year, is that in any way included in this, or do we still do that?
So we are not charging fees up for the beginning of the school year on a regular basis. Any fee that we charge the student would come before the board, so the general fees that we charge literally are for field trips, again, recorders for music program. I think that's in third grade. I can't remember. Fourth grade. It was, I blocked it when my son went through it. I'm going to be honest, I blocked it out. It's a great program, though.
I think I still have mine.
That's right. But we are not charging fees to every student in the class fee.
Good. Okay, thank you.
All right, so these fees, are they automatically charged?
They are not. It's just as needed. So if, if it's, when they plan a field trip, as long as it's under $20, then we're going to go ahead and approve it and move forward. Very, very rarely do we have a field trip that's more than that, and it usually may be our sixth grade if they're going to land between the lakes or something like that.
Okay. So this is just a beginning, a maximum?
Yes, sir.
All right, we've had a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposition? There is none. Thank you. Budget amendment contract with United Way.
Well, I am thrilled to say that Murfreesboro City Schools was awarded a fostering resilience with marginalized youth and family grant of $85,000 by the United Way of Rutherford and Cannon Counties. Funds will be used for a STARS school-based therapist in a partnership with Reed to Succeed to expand family literacy nights to include a social-emotional learning with a focus on our multilingual learners. In your packet tonight, we are recommending approval of the budget amendment and the contract with United Way, which recognizes this grant. And I would like to step back. I sent an email to the board about this a while back, but just so the public knows, you know, this really came, Amanda and Ken are here tonight. This really came from a conversation the board had at that January workshop. We were talking about the growing number of English language learners in our, in our district, and I believe it was Mr. Settles who brought up the need to make sure we were meeting all the needs of those students as well. So Ms. Adams and her team took that and ran with it. Huge thank you to United Way as well for their continued partnership with it. And so we are excited to have this additional STARS counselor in our district this year.
All right, we have a motion, excuse me, to approve the budget amendment and contract with United Way.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Any question? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you.
Mr. Campbell, if I can, I, if I hate to interrupt, one thing I got to say, you know, part of our five-year strategic plan continues to be to have a full-time mental health therapist in every school five days a week by 2027. Last year, we were able to do that in 12 of our 13 schools with this grant and with the additional supports we have from STARS and United Way and the work of our student support team. I'm thrilled to say this year, we will have a full-time mental health therapist in every school five days a week.
Very good.
All 13 of our schools.
That's what I'm talking about.
Is this reoccurring?
This is not. This is a one-time grant.
It's a one-time thing.
Yes. I will say, United Way, though, has been a great partner with us for multiple years, and the fact that we're working with other agencies such as Reed to Succeed, such as STARS, to collaboratively work on these grants is one reason why I believe they continue to be funded.
Budget amendment and job description in school nutrition.
Yes, sir. We are recommending the board approve tonight to increase our school nutrition staff by adding an assistant supervisor of school nutrition. This position would report directly to our supervisor of school nutrition, Ms. Shealy, and will be responsible for assisting her with the planning, organizing, and directing of the school nutrition program with an emphasis on good nutrition, compliance with guidelines of all regulatory agencies, and the assurance of fiscal soundness in our overall program. The position will be funded through our school nutrition budget and will serve in a capacity similar to our assistant supervisors of maintenance and transportation. In your package tonight, you'll find the budget amendment to reallocate $65,672 within the cafeteria fund and a job description for this position. Funds for the new position will be covered by a reduction of expenses in the accountant and bookkeeper and cafeteria personnel lines. There is no change to fund balance, and we are recommending approval as presented.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Long. Any question or comment?
So if we're reducing in, in each cafeteria, is that going to put a strain on the workforce itself?
No, we, we will not actually cut any other positions. We had some overages in those lines. Also, if you remember from our budget conversations earlier, this is also one of the, the one budget where we actually have a max on what we can have in fund balance, and we, that is something we're continuing to work down as well. So it will not have an impact on any other staff as, as well as- So it will not have an impact on any other staff as, as well as just an additional position. We're not, we're taking money from those line items, we're not actually reducing staff in those line items.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Motion has been made to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposition? There is none, thank you. Approval of contract with Mitchell-Nelson Painting.
We are presenting an agreement with Centel Brothers for the painting of the hallways, gyms, restrooms, and restrooms at Mitchell-Nelson Elementary. This cooperative purchase agreement is pursuant to the terms and pricing of the Sumner County Contract for Painting Services and is submitted to the board for approval. The total cost of the contract is $70,005.
Have a motion to approve the contract.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Long, have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard, any questions? When is this to begin?
I'm going to turn that over to Mr. Barch. They're currently, if you want to, while you have that opportunity to go ahead and let them know what they're working on now and this is that phase two.
Right now, they're currently painting all classrooms, and they should have that pretty much knocked out by the end of this week. They got in earlier than originally we thought they were, and thank goodness they did, and they're in there working on that. And then during fall break and winter break, this contract that we hope is approved will finish up the interior of the school. Library, the gym, counselors' offices, and all, it'll get the rest of the building.
My other question is, what is option one? Paint the woodwork on the front of the stage?
That, they're going to, they're going to trim it out, they're going to finish it out on the front. It's, instead of leaving it, it was, during the bidding process, it was, we were unsure about what we were going to have painted and what we weren't in the gym.
Is that included in this contract?
Yes, yes, sir.
Anybody else, Ms. Long?
Is this the primary and the elementary, or just the elementary?
Just the elementary, just the elementary.
The primary was painted interior last summer, the, all the hallways were painted, the gym at the, a primary was painted this summer.
Yes, this summer, yes.
Well, it looks great, I walked into it the other day. So we did, we have done some extensive painting at the primary in the last year. This is specifically for the elementary. We could not do it in the elementary last year. If you remember, we were getting the new ceiling, which was a huge project. Really excited about what's happening at Mitchell-Nelson just in the last, I guess, two years. We have a brand-new roof, we have a brand-new ceiling, we have a brand-new playground, and the entire interior will be painted, we have a new nurses' office, so a lot of great work going on at the elementary school. And, and we had to get the roof, the ceiling, all that done before we could move to something more cosmetic things like painting.
That's great, thank you.
All right, you've had a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposition? There is none, thank you. Contract with Staples Renewal.
Yes, this cooperative, cooperative purchasing agreement with Sourcewell is for office paper materials, which is being submitted to the board for approval. This agreement will provide paper products for the entire school district for the 24-25 school year. The total cost of the contract will be dependent on the type and numbers of materials purchased. However, the total cost will not exceed the amount budgeted for the line item. And just for reference, the total cost for paper in 24, for the FY '24 year was around $85,000, and we are recommending approval as presented.
I move for approval.
Thank you, Ms. Moore, have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard, any questions? I think I may ask you, is, this is not necessarily the local Staples store, or is it?
I'm going to let Ms., pushing it to.
So it is the national Staples, the Sourcewell agreement is with the national Staples, but delivery is satisfied through the local store.
The local store is involved in it.
It's going to be dependent on what products we purchase and whether they're available at the local store, but delivery is sourced typically through the local store.
Did Dunder Mifflin put in a bid?
This is like, this is a cooperative agreement, so we went, we did not go through Dunder Mifflin, but I heard they're highly recommended.
Highly recommended.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposition? There is none, thank you. Approval of a contract with NHC Rehabilitation Services for Special Ed.
Yes, sir. This contract with NHC Rehabilitation will provide special education services, specifically physical therapy, to eligible students pursuant to each student's IEP. The total cost of the contract will be dependent on the amount of, and types of services that are provided. However, the contract will not exceed the $150,000 funding that we have in the budget. Funding for this contract is through our federal IDEA Part B budget, and we are recommending approval as presented.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson, we have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Long, question? I see no question. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposition? I've seen them, thank you. School nutrition produce agreement.
Yes, the school nutrition department issued an invitation to bid for produce for the 24-25 school year and had three respondents. Institutional Wholesale Company was the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. The total cost of the contract will be dependent on the number and, the number of, type and number of produce items purchased. However, the cost of the contract will not exceed the budget provided for this line item. Funding for this contract is sourced through our federal school nutrition budget, and we are recommending approval of the contract with Institutional Wholesale Company.
Have a motion to approve the contract.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Long, we have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard, any question or comment?
No question.
Ms. Moore?
So when it refers to produce, is that fresh produce or frozen, canned, is it all types of?
I'm going to let Ms. Shealy come up and answer that specifically.
It would be all fresh product.
All the fresh stuff, okay. Does any of it come from local sources?
It does, that is part of the invitation to bid, is that, to include local farmers, which is a 250-mile radius of Nashville.
Nice, okay, that's great.
Absolutely excellent. Can the board take a field trip?
Sure.
Thank you, Ms., you have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposition? There is none, thank you. Contract with Discovery Education.
Yes, this contract with the Discovery Education is presented to the board for approval for the 24-25 school year. This contract provides our adopted science curriculum to our students and teachers for the upcoming school year. The total cost of the contract is $136,435, and funding will be provided through our general-purpose budget. This is a continuation of services for the 24-25 school year and not a new product. I do want to specify, this is the last year that we'll be purchasing these science materials. These science materials were adopted from the state-approved adoption list eight years ago, which is the textbook-rotation cycle, and this is the last year of that eight-year cycle. So Ms. Arnett and Ms. Barch and the instruction team will begin the science adoption process for a new materials later this fall, and then in the spring, we will actually bring a new recommended textbook to you. So this will be the last year for this contract for our science materials.
Have a motion to approve the contract.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard, have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Long, any question or comment? I see none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposition? There is none, thank you. Contract Open Up Resources.
Yes, this contract for Open Up Resources curriculum bundles is presented to the board for approval for the 24-25 school year. This contract will provide our EL Education textbook bundles for grades kindergarten through six, which is our adopted reading curriculum. EL Education is, as I said, our adopted curriculum, and the total cost of the contract is $259,765. It's funded through the general-purpose budget. Similar to the last board item, this is a continuation of services and not a new product. And I would tell you how many years we have left on this, is it four? Maybe five, something? I think we're about halfway through this textbook adoption process with this, but this amount is just for the 24-25 school year.
We have a motion to approve the contract.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Moore, we have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson, we have any question? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? There is none, thank you. Contract for Upland Software.
This contract with Upland Software is for the use of our FileBound software program. The school district uses FileBound to store and maintain confidential student records. The total cost of the contract is $81,969. That is a three-year contract with the annual cost of $27,323. Funding is provided through our general-purpose budget. We are in the third year of this three-year contract, and we are recommending approval as presented.
Have a motion to approve the contract.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard, we have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Moore, any question or comment? Ms. Long?
I assume this is highly protected.
Yes, very highly protected. I don't know if Mr. Rocha or Ms. Avise want to add any more to that, but it is what our, all of our files are scanned into that, password-protected, encrypted, yes, very protected.
Okay, thank you.
And this is, we've gotten rid of, and I think most schools, we have a program, most of our schools have gotten, where we are in the process of ensuring all of our files have moved to this electronic format versus the old hard files we used to keep in the schools.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposition? There is none, thank you. I have approval of board policies on first reading.
Thank you. The first board policy to come before the board tonight is 1.800. We are recommending changes to this board policy to align with the TSBA model policy, which emphasizes the statutory and regulatory requirements for the annual creation and approval of the school calendar. We are recommending that we approve changes to board policy 1.800 on first reading.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson, have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Long, any question? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposition? There is none, thank you. Board policy 3.301.
Board policy 3.301 is a new policy recommendation. It is recommended to provide clear guidelines on the provision and use of district cellphones with the goal of safeguarding district information, maintaining legal compliance, and managing district resources efficiently. The staff recommendation would be to approve board policy 3.301 on first reading.
Have a motion to approve the policy on first reading.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Long, have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard, any question? How many of these system-wide cellphones do we have? Any idea?
Not off the top of my head, I can get that for you. All district leadership have it, and then if the job specifically requires it, they're also provided one. So as we look at jobs, we determine if a cellphone's needed. So for example, our family liaisons that work with our families, they have one that, so they have a number they can give families in case of emergency, that's not their personal cellphone, but I can get you the exact number.
But if, if they want to use their own personal phone, they can. Am I right, reading into policy?
Yes, and we do, and then we will pay them the, the amount of the plan that we pay for a phone, we would just reimburse to the employee if they want to keep one phone.
Ms. Moore?
A question about public records with that, so I'm looking at you, Lauren Bush. So if, if I use my personal device, but I'm using it for government business, for the public school system, is it then my whole phone susceptible to being subject to an open records request?
I'm going to have to say my favorite answer is, it will depend on the specific circumstances. But we've had, we've had that before, I've been in school districts where we have had to image somebody's cellphone pursuant to a public records request. So it's going to depend on what it specifically is being requested, and if it can be easily retrieved from possibly another app. So thinking of like, if we're using a specific Teams app in the phone, and we can get it from the app on the computer, but if it's text messages or something specific to the phone, like WhatsApp, something like that, we're, we would maybe have to image the phone. So it's going to be dependent on the specific requirements of the statute and what's being requested.
And, and employees understand that? If they say, I just want to use my phone, they know the full risk of doing that?
So this year, we've actually implemented an agreement that employees have to sign prior to either receiving the stipend or being issued a district phone, and that is specifically included in there, like, to the extent that you're using the phone and you're engaging in, in business on your phone, those records are subject to public records requests.
Okay, thank you.
What was your question?
My question was, if, if I'm using my personal cellphone instead of a district phone, but I'm doing school business on it, which is susceptible to an open records request because it's government, does that mean my whole personal phone is then subject to a request? If I choose to use my phone instead of a school-issued phone?
I think we had that come up a few years ago, and they were susceptible to examination.
Yes, it's going to be, it's going to depend on what is being requested, but I have had to image entire phones in other, other districts.
Okay, you've heard, had a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposition? There is none, thank you. Board policy Student Psychological Services.
This is also a new policy that is drafted to comply with the State Board of Education rules that require each LEA to adopt a policy addressing the provision of student psychological services within the school district. This policy requires the director of schools to develop procedures to ensure that psychological services are available to all students. The staff recommendation would be to approve board policy 6.406 on first reading.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir, have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Long, any question? Ms. Moore?
The last line of this policy is, no school personnel shall conduct any mental health screenings except as provided by law. So my understanding is that we employ school psychologists who do some screenings, are those not considered mental health screenings, or are those fall under that provided-by-law clause? How does that comply with this?
So our school psychologists are licensed, are able to do different screenings that may fall under that mental health perspective. It's going to depend on the specific screening, because they do, they do psychoeducational screenings, educational-specific screenings, so it's going to depend on the screening that's being given. But what the law requires is that we receive parent consent prior to any screening or assessment that's given within the school context. So we always, we always get that prior to a student being assessed by a school psychologist, specifically.
So that's what that would mean, that except as provided by law? So if we get parental consent, then our employees can conduct a mental health screening?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Richardson?
And that Tennessee Code Annotated goes into consent, but it doesn't appear to define what screens are allowable or not allowable. Is that intentional?
I would guess so. I will say, to the extent that we are, so there is a federal law that sits on top of the state law that requires us to get consent for any screening that we do within the educational context pursuant to special education, so we're getting that consent regardless prior to.
And I will also say, as part of that IEP team or S-team meeting, that when we were having those with parents and talking about it, our forums specifically identify what screenings we'll do and what screenings we may do as a result, and the parent signs off on that after those specific screenings have been identified.
Excellent, thank you.
You have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposition? There is none, thank you. Board policy 6.407, Student Social Services.
Board policy 6.407 is also a new policy that is drafted to comply with State Board of Education rules that require each LEA to adopt a policy that specifically addresses the provision of student social services. So this policy complies with that requirement. Our staff recommendation would be to approve board policy 6.407 on first reading.
Have a motion to approve policy 6.407.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Moore, have a second. Have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Any question or comment? I see none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? There is none. Thank you. Policy 6.500, Special Education Students.
Changes are recommended to Board Policy 6.500 to comply with intervention and reporting requirements of the Special Education Behavioral Supports Act. This policy incorporates requirements from the current Board Policy 6.501. The staff recommendation would be to approve changes to Board Policy 6.500 on first reading.
I have a motion to accept the change on Policy 6.500.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Long. Have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Any question? I see none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? There is none. Thank you. Retirement of Board Policy 6.601.
The language to address the requirements of the Special Education Behavioral Supports Act will now be included in Board Policy 6.500. As a result, it's recommended that this board policy be retired to avoid replication of the requirements, and really, just to clarify and clean up our board policies. The staff recommendation would be to approve retirement of Board Policy 6.501 on first reading.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
I have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Long. I stand corrected. I said 6.601 and 6.501. I want to make sure we get that right. Any question or comment? We've had a motion and a second. Ms. Moore?
I have a question. So this one, we're completely striking, and it's really long. There's a lot of text.
Yes.
And so we're saying, because it's incorporated in the one we just approved, 6.500, and we only added about three to six lines there. So how did this policy get basically shrunk down into a bit of text?
Right. So like I said, it's a little bit of a cleanup. The 6.501 is verbatim, the law, the Special Education Behavioral Supports Act, verbatim. That's typically not best practice when you're talking about board policy. You do want board policy to restate and then put the processes and procedures that the board and the district are going to comply with relative to the law and to its policy. You don't, you don't want to necessarily restate verbatim the law. And there's a lot in that law that doesn't apply to us. We don't use noxious substances with students, and we don't use mechanical restraints with students, ever. So to the extent that we do incorporate the Special Education Behavioral Support Act within our district, we're going to follow that state law very closely and carefully, but we don't need to repeat verbatim the state law within our policy. So that's the recommendation.
Okay, thank you. That helps.
Other questions? If not, have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposition? I see none. Thank you. Policy 6.505, Students in Foster Care.
This is a new policy that's adopted from the TSBA model policy that outlines state and federal law requirements for services and supports provided to students in foster care. This policy outlines and codifies our current practices. Our staff recommendation would be to approve Board Policy 6.505 on first reading.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Long. It mentioned in the policy, the Assistant Superintendent of Services. Who is that?
Mr. Rocha.
Okay.
Ken.
Thank you, sir. I just wanted to make sure he knew what he was doing.
Mr. Chairman.
We're just adding a little bit to you there, sir. All right. I have a motion and a second. Any questions or comment? Mr. Ballard?
Procedureal question. I'll be sure, you're recommending many of these items to be approved on the first reading, and we do that. Then are we going to see it again on a second reading?
It comes back unless there are changes. It comes back on second reading in the consent agenda.
Right.
To the extent that the board would like to see anything removed from the consent agenda, you can always request that from the board chair or from Dr. Duke.
Okay. Well, thank you.
And, Mr. Chairman, I must say, as I work in this field daily on foster care children, this is an extraordinary policy that will change the lives of children, that will expedite their ability to have access to education, to food, to social supports. This is an incredible policy. I'm very glad it's come to our attention, and I'm going to happily vote for this. This is an incredible move forward.
In reading the policy, I was amazed a little bit at the travel restrictions for foster children. I didn't realize that, and their, what they can do and what they can't do. I have a motion and a second to approve the policy on 6.505, Students in Foster Care. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposition? There is none. Thank you. All right. Reports and information. I don't see nothing.
Yeah, I have just a few tonight, if that's all right, sir.
All right, that'd be all right.
Just a quick few updates for the board as we prepare. As you know, we are wrapping up the end of summer. Teachers, our principals are back, our assistant principals' first day are back tomorrow. Teachers are back on the 31st, which is next Wednesday, as well, and students return on the 7th. All of our new teachers that we have hired this year have been going through their fir, today was their first day of new teacher orientation at MTSU. They have a second day tomorrow, so we have that going on. We also have principals' meetings that start again tomorrow, so a very, very busy week for us. But believe it or not, this is it. This is where we are. Ms. Arnett talked about August 1st being our district's YPD day. Again, I put it in your board updates for a couple of Fridays, but I would invite the board, if you would like, to stop by that morning. It's just a great opportunity to see all of our certified teachers and principals in one building at one time. So at 8:00 is the kickoff for that.
Where, what building is that in?
It's in the Student Union Building.
Okay.
In the ballroom at the top.